Today is Monday, February 26, 2024, and it's 6:30 PM. I call this meeting to order. Christina, can you call Raul? Stuart?
Here.
Janone? Janone?
Yeah.
Sorry. Rigby?
Here.
Najak? Moreno?
Here.
Duing? And Commissioner Mitchell was excused, and Council Liaison Boon?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can we have a city council update, please?
Oh, yes. We had a lot. I think after your meeting of the of the 12, I think we had the next week, we had a meeting where we talked about a lot of interesting things for the Planning Commission. First of all, in that meeting, we adopted the city goals, the whole for 2024, and a work plan will follow after that. And so we also discussed about, you know, the urban renewal areas. All we have, three of them. And as you may, you know that the East End will end in 2028 with the North Anchor. And we want to reopen the, you know, it was rebuilt, the foothills in 2012, January, but the foothills, Urban Renewal District, which is a great opportunity. You all are talking about housing, the possibilities over there. So it's something we want to do. We discussed last time, and we really want to reopen that district. And we, City Council agreed, you know, about that. And there is also the, we wanted also to, you know, raise the indebtedness of the Lake Grove Urban Renewal District that we might reach its maximum right now. And, you know, we have the technician who presented, gave us all the possibilities to do that, working with the school district or the county, or as all the people who are part of that district. So, and so that's a part of that, the plan of reopening. So most important is to reopen the foothills and then to raise the indebtedness of the Lake Grove. Talking about the Lake Grove, I, we discussed the library, which is very important. Most of Lake Oswego, they think that we need to have a library that's bigger, that's more functional, that's multi, you know, use. And so we are thinking of Lake Grove sometime somewhere over there. We are discussing with the School District. And, you know, maybe there there are places over there where we can work with the district that are starting to wrap up certain constructions and move some schools. Maybe with that, we can find a place. It's just, you know, in the phase of discussion and like making the ideas. So we have a library that really is functional and that, you know, that is in the dimension of Lake Oswego. So we also discuss about the urban community forest. It was a very interesting discussion like you did. We are working on it, long discussion. But also we follow generally the same question you were asking, what the same question City Council were asking. And also they did again, like last time, a great presentation. And it was, you know, we are continuing the discussion for adoption in June. I think they are coming in June for City Council to adopt the the document and move on. We, I think also we discussed the, in that discussion, everything came up, you know, that we discussed the three code, everything. And, you know, it's important. And I am glad also you were discussing always, you know, today, the interesting topics that I think, you know, the City Council will be very interested. So I think that's what I have. My notes, as I was talking, my notes became, you know, I don't know if you know, it's saying everything I'm saying is being written. So I'm losing my notes. But I think that's what I have. So, and, you know, of course, we always discuss about housing. Every council, it's housing, housing. And you are the motor, the engine of housing, start with the Planning Commission and the Planning Department here. So that's it. If you have questions, I am on your disposal.
Does anyone have any questions? Council member, thank you so much for the update and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Christina, do we have anyone who is requesting to make a public comment? Thank you. So moving right along, we are ready for findings, conclusions, and order. Community Development Code 2023 Annual Amendments, LU 230036. Public comment accepted, no. So do we have someone on the staff to present this? What are we?
We don't typically make a presentation on the findings, conclusion, and order. But certainly, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer that.
Yeah, just to remind you all of, there was an item on the agenda to consider, potentially some testimony that wasn't able to be provided at the last meeting during the hearing. We reached out to that individual and they have declined to testify, opted not to testify, either in writing or in person tonight. So we did reach out to them and encourage them, but they wanted to, you know, essentially the idea was that they would just testify to council if they wanted to do that further and that they were happy with what the Planning Commission recommended, so they didn't see that it was necessary.
Okay, thank you for that. So general updates for the Commission for Citizen Involvement.
Madam Chair, you'll need to adopt the findings.
I'm sorry.
The Commission would need to consider the findings and then move to adopt.
Okay. So okay, do you want me to read the statement here? No?
I move to approve the findings as written.
And recommend adoption of ordinance 2938 to the City Council.
We have a motion to, on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Do we have any nays?
Nay.
Okay. Our ayes, one nay, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so on to the general updates for the Commission for Citizen Involvement. And we have an action item. Mary's Landing Neighborhood Request for City Recognition, PP 230008. The Commission will consider a request from the Mary's Landing Neighborhood to become a city-recognized neighborhood association. The Commission for Citizen Involvement will make an advisory recommendation to City Council. So our staff coordinator is Eric Olson. I'll let you take it.
Tonight, I just wanted to introduce, oh, okay, now the microphone's working. Thank you, Chair Marina. I just wanted to introduce an individual who will be helping me present tonight. This is Carol White.
My name's Carol White. I've been the project administrator, and now I've been voted the secretary of our proposed neighborhood association. The other people here in the front row with me are the other members that were elected to the board for our new neighborhood association. They are Sister Mary Ellen, Hollahan, Karen Logston, Ricky Stoll, and Ralph Font. So.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Carol. I'll just start with a few slides and then hand it back over to Carol to talk a little about this. But as she has pointed out, essentially, we're here to consider an item to grant formal city recognition to a newly proposed Mary's Landing Neighborhood Association. And you can kind of see with the star here on the map where we're talking about within the city, the area, kind of where you see that red star that's currently not recognized by a city neighborhood association. And you can see, it's pretty rare within the city. There really aren't that many areas that aren't covered by a neighborhood association that's been recognized. So, yeah, hoping to clean that up here by providing them with some recognition tonight. So just a little bit about the background of the neighborhood. So it's kind of generally bound on the south by the border, the southern border of the city of Lake Oswego, on the east by the Willamette River. I'm trying to do this on the fly, but to the west by the Skylands Neighborhood.
West of Skylands and the county.
Yes, and the county. And then what is the road to the north?
North is Glenmore.
Glenmore, Glenmorey Neighborhood, yes, to the north. So those are the general boundaries, but we're talking about the area that you see depicted on the map right now. It's comprised of 720 households approximately and approximately 1,230 residents. It's, you know, kind of, a lot of the area is taken up by the former Merrill Hurst University campus. It also includes Mary's Woods Continuing Care Retirement Complex in that area, as well as on the west side of the freeway, the Merrill Hurst and Merrill Hurst Place Planned Residential Developments. So that's kind of a good sort of overview of what's going on in the neighborhood. I am going to go over this quickly, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process that they have presented to us, the residents and Carol have presented to us about how they went about the formation of this new neighborhood association. So they initially reached out to us last spring regarding their idea to create a new neighborhood association in this area. Generally speaking, the idea was to get recognition so that they could gain access to city grant programs, particularly for emergency preparedness, and also get started on emergency preparedness planning, you know, with access to those resources from the city. And also just to establish a formal line of communication with the city for commentary on various different projects and land use issues. They essentially went out and identified stakeholders shortly after in the spring and summer and held some informational meetings in fall of last year on October 11th and November 18th. Did a lot of work to kind of get notice out for a more kind of general meeting that was held very recently on February 10th. So that, you know, the idea was to make that the formal sort of meeting to establish the neighborhood association. And so there were notices distributed to 608 households, as well as businesses, organizations located within the proposed boundaries. There were also flyers distributed within some of those multifamily complexes just to try to cover the bases and make sure that folks that might not have gotten the mail notices could still find out about this. And lawn signs were placed and emails were sent out as well. So essentially, yeah, at the meeting, and you'll talk a little bit more about this, but it was voted to establish the neighborhood association and they established board members and officers, et cetera. So, yeah, it's a formal request that we've now brought to the Commission for Citizen Involvement for consideration. Just a little bit about the name before I hand this over. The name was kind of the result of a naming contest that was held for the new neighborhood association. And it was suggested by one of the residents. Generally speaking, a lot of the names associated with that area, such as Mary's Woods or Merrill Hurst, were already taken by trademarked entities or another neighborhood association nearby. So generally speaking, the idea was to name the area Mary's Landing to honor the significance of the arrival of the 12 Sisters of the Holy Names, who eventually established the Merrill Hurst Campus. But they arrived via boat in the 1800s, but didn't actually establish. And I guess they arrived in Portland in the 1800s and didn't establish the campus until the early 1900s. Yeah. So that's the idea and the sort of what it's commemorating. So, yeah, with that, I'll hand it over to Carol.
Okay.
And you can advance the slides just with that if you'd like.
Thank you for meeting with us tonight. And my part of the presentation is just to give you a visual history of the identity that we have, introduce the people and the places we have. So let's see, this is the forwarding button?
Yeah, just that big one.
I was able to find this aerial photograph from 1951 that gives you a view of how undeveloped the land was back then. You can see Highway 43, but that wasn't built until 1919. The Sisters, when they came out here to Portland in 1859, their mission was to work on education throughout the Pacific Northwest. And that was the time where the Pacific Northwest was booming. And so by 40 years, they'd outgrown space in Portland. And they came looking out here and bought, at first, they bought 50 acres from the Bullock Homestead, that area. And as Eric said, arrived by boat. 10 years later, they bought an additional 200 acres. Let's see. And it wasn't annexed by the city of Lake Oswego, my records show, until 1972. The most recent aerial shot I could find was only from 2011. But here you can see where the houses across Highway 43 on the west side have already gone up. There's the campus of Merrill Hurst University. And Phase 1 of the Mary's Woods Senior Community can also be seen on the far right side of this photo. But most people, when they think of our area, they just drive through it. They know Highway 43, they may know our historic bus stop there. But that's what most people see. What we'd like the Commission to know is that we're much more than that. We have commercial entities. You can find places to exercise, see the dentist, or stop for coffee, scones, and panini. The west side of the highway, there is Glenmore Park. There's former Street of Dreams homes and many other homes that have been built over there since the Street of Dreams was held. The east side of the highway is where our neighborhood shows its diversity. The west side of the highway is privately owned. All the land east of the highway is owned by the Sisters of the Holy Name. But it includes a post office, which was established in 1940. It came in very handy a couple of years ago when the Westland Post Office was closed. And the Westlanders preferred to come up to Merrill Hurst than to go to Oregon City. In April of 2024, Mercy Greenbrier will start receiving new families in this complex of affordable housing. So Eric's numbers on the number of residents will probably change once that fills in. Our people are young. While college students no longer walk the paths of Merrill Hurst, there are elementary and high school students in our neighborhood. The commercial kitchens at the college now prepare meals for Head Start students throughout the region. And from 1859 through today, the Sisters of the Holy Names have lived out their mission to support education. The Christie School and Orphanage was actually opened in 1908, and it now houses Harmony Academy. For privacy reasons, I do not show any photographs of children, but they're here, yellows, yellow school buses at all. And the school buses, I might add, come from Estacada, they come from Camby, they come from Sherwood. They come from all over Washington and Clackamas County because the school that the Clackamas Educational Service District runs down there is very specialized. But our people are also mature. On the left is the meeting hall, and we have several meeting halls, but this is where we conducted our February 10th meeting. The photo on the right is just from my Christmas card. We had a cheerleading event on campus last year. So as a community, we are marching forward. On the left, you see people in our annual Alzheimer's Remembrance March. And a sign of the future, we even have electric vehicle charging stations in our neighborhood. So we are, excuse me for getting choked up, but we are a vibrant neighborhood. And many people live, work, and study here. And on their behalf, we request your approval of our petition.
There's a bit of a delay. Thank you so much, Carol. That was really great and gave some great context. I will just finish off with a few slides and then we can have questions to answer with both Carol and myself, if that's all right. So I just wanted to really quickly touch on the criteria that the Commission for Citizen Involvement should be considering with this new neighborhood association, as well as their general role. So I've excerpted some portions of the Citizen Involvement guidelines. Generally speaking, you know, the idea is to advise boards and commissions and council on matters pertaining to citizen involvement, that's your general role. But also, as part of that role more specifically, you're intended to encourage the formation and continued activity of citizen-initiated neighborhood associations and to make recommendations to City Council on the recognition of new neighborhood associations. So it's a formal part of the CCI's role. In terms of the criteria themselves, you know, essentially, they're supposed to represent as large of an area as possible with common identity and social communication. They're also supposed to share common features, practices, and history that contribute to a common interest of the residents, so things like travel patterns, land use patterns, history, planning and development decisions, and governance boundaries. So when it comes to travel patterns, you can see that there's a lot of sort of connectivity to that Highway 43. And there is, you know, some common sort of elements there when it comes to circulation, as well as the campus itself, it's kind of a self-contained circulation entity. Land use patterns, you know, obviously, there are, there's residential, but there's different types of residential in that area. But for the most part, we did see that there was enough commonality in sort of the way that the area was developed, even though there are sort of different uses, that there was a lot of sort of commonality between the land use patterns. You know, common history, I think, as was pointed out with Carol's presentation in particular, there was, you know, sort of similar sort of process with the sort of acquisition of the land and the development of that particular part of the city. And, yeah, you know, obviously, there's unique planning in that area for the campus institutional zone of Merrill Hurst, or the former Merrill Hurst Campus. But there is sort of some unique planning and development kind of quirks in that area that are fairly, you know, special to that area. And, yeah, the boundaries are, you know, consistent with our city and, you know, general boundaries for the city and neighborhood associations. In terms of the bylaws, they have been reviewed by Deputy City Attorney Boone here and appear to comply with our minimum requirements, which are to not charge for membership, to make sure that membership is open to all residents, property owners, businesses, and nonprofit representatives within that area, and basically to give an outline of the structure of a neighborhood. And we found that it met those criteria. In terms of the procedure, you'll notice that, you know, it kind of requires the folks in the neighborhood association or the proposed one to go out and hold a well-publicized general neighborhood meeting. And, you know, they've essentially submitted notice and sufficient documentation to show that they've done that. We actually also clarified kind of what we were looking for when we say well-publicized general neighborhood meeting to give them some guidance about a year ago and kind of what they should be doing in terms of this outreach. So you can see there's actually a letter included as an attachment where we go into those details, if you're curious about that. So essentially, you know, we asked for a roster of the officers and board members and essentially for them to submit all the recognition, sort of the proof that they comply with these criteria. So they've done the sort of, the meeting to provide information, try to organize and establish the actual neighborhood association, adopt bylaws, adopt the boundaries, elect officers, et cetera. So we think they've covered their basis. This is kind of what the neighborhood association map would look like with the new neighborhood association. Instead of being gray, you'd see that they would have their own Mary's Landing area and it would be green like the other recognized neighborhood associations here in the city. Yeah, so that's the conclusion of the presentation. We're happy to address any questions you might have for myself or anybody from the area that's been working so hard on this.
Thank you for that great presentation. It was very interesting. Does anyone in the Commission have any questions? You have a question?
I don't think there are any, but I just wanted to confirm that the street that runs along the river, I think it's called River Road or Old River Road, are there, are there any houses along that road?
None, within our boundaries, none facing the road. There are Villa and Villa Estate Retirement Homes in the Mary's Woods complex that back onto that road.
Oh, but they're not, they're not addressed on that road, they face.
No USPS addresses on that road.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
I mean, it looks like, I looked at your memo that you'd written, and it looked like that at the votes, they were unanimous in favor of the neighborhood association, is that right?
Yes, and we were surprised that 70 people showed up. We were not expecting that large a turnout.
So it sounds like the answer is no. But have you heard anyone have any qualms about there being a neighborhood association? And any reasons why that would maybe be the case?
The major stakeholder, of course, is the Sisters of the Holy Name, who own most of the real estate. And we've had discussions with them, and they have a representative on the board now. So the other thing, after our meeting on February 10, several members of the Homeowners Association from across the highway came up. They're very supportive, but we were trying, we have two additional positions on the board we could have elected them to. And they were saying, not quite yet, but this is something we've been wanting to do, and we never had the, we always had too much inertia, we're glad you've done it. So we'll keep nurturing those relationships. We'd like to get at least one of them on our board, because we have two open positions.
Sounds great, yeah.
Good question. Any other questions?
Why do you suppose they said not quite yet? That's kind of curious.
Because they're busy. And it's one of those things, when you take on a commitment, you have to clear your calendar of one commitment before you take on another one. And, but we've got some small ad hoc committee assignments that we could get them involved in, maybe.
Okay. If there are no additional questions, can I get a motion to recommend the approval recognizing Mary's Landings Neighborhood Association?
I so move.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Another unanimous vote.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much, Carol. Thank you all.
Both the attorney and Eric have been a great help. And I might add, the Neighborhood Association Chairs Committee, they've been very supportive too and gave us a lot of guidance as we went along. It's a great organization.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it.
That's great to hear. Thank you. And thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, so we have a work session. The Planning Commission, Commission for Citizen Involvement 2024 Work Plan, work session number one. The Commission will review and provide direction on a preliminary work plan to support relevant 2024 City Council goals and initiatives. Our staff coordinator is Eric Olson.
All right, I will be giving you another brief presentation. No slides this time, but I just really, you know, the idea is to open up discussion for the Planning Commission by talking about what we accomplished last year during 2023 and what I've at least put out as some tentative ideas for what we can be working on for 2024. So, yeah, I guess I'll just start out by mentioning some of what we accomplished this last year during 2023. It was a pretty, you know, staff was pretty limited in their capacity last year, but we were able to accomplish some, some great things. We had a little bit of turnover within the Planning Department, but we were still able to adopt our Housing Needs Analysis in October. So that was one of the state-required, state-mandated elements there. We were, we made progress, at least with complying with the State of Oregon's Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules. That's currently in progress. We were able to adopt the Time, Place, and Manner Regulations for the psilocybin facilities. We were able to get, at least as of today, a recommended approval of the annual CDC amendments and middle housing cleanup code amendments. In terms of discretionary items, we did work to develop a process to require mitigation for ministerial residential development or middle housing development last year. That was another sort of accomplishment. And we assisted the planning, or the Palisades Neighborhood Association with planning for an Oprah Lee Zone, but ultimately, we had to put those efforts on hold due to some pending state legislation that is directly sort of influencing that work. So we will actually shortly, within the next couple of months, have a bit of an update for you about the state legislative session and kind of where things landed and what we'll need to do to respond as a city. So just other. So just other work that we did in 2023, city council eventually adopted some work that the Planning Commission started in '22 related to non-conforming residential development. So that was adopted formally last year. We, somewhat similar to what we did tonight, spoke about a expansion of the Uplands Neighborhood Association boundary to incorporate the Johns Woods area, so provided more recognition, city sort of neighborhood association level recognition to Johns Woods as being recognized as within a neighborhood association now. So that was another milestone. There was a rezoning at 710 South Shore Road, and we spoke briefly about the vertical housing pilot program was related to the housing production strategy. So that's kind of a really general overview of what we covered last year. As I mentioned, we had minimal capacity compared to previous years last year, but we actually are hoping that we have better capacity moving forward. We have a new staff member, which I'm excited to introduce to you all in coming meetings, that will be able to help us out with some work moving forward in long-range planning. So his name's Michael. I'm excited to introduce him to you all. In terms of what I've proposed for this year, you know, we kind of, there've been some changes to the way we go about boards and commissions, goal setting and summit and sort of the entire process. So it's kind of a little bit more collaborative and sort of oriented around summit and at least as of, you know, this year and these new changes. So really, the idea is for, you know, that conversation to have, happen collaboratively at summit and then for the boards and commissions to come up with work plans to support the goals that were agreed to at that point at the council and goal, or I'm sorry, the boards and commission and council summit. So essentially, we only have about four or five different ideas for what to work on this year, based on sort of state mandates and other things that are required. So I'll just briefly go over those with you and then open it up for a discussion about additional items. So the housing needs and production work will continue apace. So we, as I said, adopted the HNA last year, but of course, are continuing to work on the housing production strategy this year that has to be adopted before the end of the year. We're also continuing our work on citywide parking reform in response to the CFEC rules that also needs to be adopted before the end of the year. We'll have folks from the engineering department come and talk to us about some amendments to the stormwater code, specifically elements of the community development code that relate to stormwater. Most of the amendments are within the utility section of the code, but there would be some amendments within the community development code just for consistency, as well as next year, sort of the 2024 annual CDC amendments. That's something we do on an annual basis, so that'll continue to be a goal. We have already more or less accomplished this goal, but another discretionary goal is to recognize a new neighborhood association in Mary's Landing, so making good progress there. And I wanted to also mention that Commissioner Scannone has been reaching out to me, and we've been discussing some of his ideas related to railroad safety, so I've been passing those on to the Transportation Advisory Board. Generally speaking, those are outside of the purview of the Planning Commission, but there might be some opportunities for us to get like a informational or educational kind of update from transportation engineering staff here at the Planning Commission. So yeah, that's something that most likely wouldn't end up being, you know, a formal part of the work plan, but we could certainly address it to the capacity that, you know, is appropriate for the PC. So yeah, I would just say, you know, we'll have to make sure that ideas are within the purview of the Planning Commission and, you know, accomplishable with staff resources and time and other sort of commitments, but yeah, I guess I really want to open up the discussion for any other ideas that the Planning Commission might have for projects to undertake this year in advance of council goals.
So you want us to give you more work?
If, if you want. If that's something that sounds good to you. But yeah, we do have more capacity, so particularly in the coming, you know, after a few months from now, we'll, we'll have, yeah, a little bit more to provide to you all. And yeah, if, if you think that we should dedicate our resources for other projects, it'd be good to know.
Okay. Any ideas?
I have a couple. Before I say anything, you know, Eric and Jessica, you have been great at answering my emails, long email, you know, kind of explaining that, "No, Dave, doesn't quite work like that," so I understand. And I guess my kind of overarching piece is more around how do we collaborate more with some of the other groups? Now, I know you, you touched on that, just to try and do more, in essence, with less. You know, how, how do we, how do we do that? You know, can we be the group that actually spearheads some way to manage that, so we're, we've got different groups working together to push an agenda forward? The train aspect that I brought up, and I've been working back and forth with Eric on, is an interesting one as I dove into it. It's the, his name is Will Farley, who, and he's, he's, is he like your peer in a way? I'm not exactly sure.
He's our senior transportation engineer, so not exactly, but yes, he's, he's, yeah, he's not necessarily my peer, but he is the liaison to the Transportation Advisory Board, so in that way, yeah.
So he, he had done a lot of work trying to figure out how you get the Railroad Association Northwestern to work with the city to do something around the trains that go through with the whistles that blow. Trains go through five times a day, and I was really surprised to, to hear his report. He has over 550 signatures from citizens that want to do something which is called Quiet Rail. So when they go through, there's different kind of warning signals, so they're not blowing the horn at 2:00 in the morning, you know, at 6:00 AM.
I was gonna say at 5:00 AM.
It, it, five times a day, it can be any time. But the surprise was that hearing loss starts to happen, and decibel is how you, how you measure sound. So anything over 60 decibel over time can really have a negative impact on hearing. A lawnmower is at 70. A train that goes through is at 170. The next thing that comes close to that is an F-16 Super Hornet taking off from an aircraft carrier at 180 decibels. So it gives you an idea of how loud this thing is, and, and the people that are in that area are, long-term, have hearing loss because of it. So, so it was just an interesting piece when you start to look at, well, how do we make this happen? And then we've got different, Salem has come through with a quiet zone, Camby and Milwaukee, so it can be done. And to Will's credit, you know, he put all his work out, sent it to the Railroad Commission, and then never heard back. They just, they just never called back. So somehow, these other cities got it through. So, so Will, is it really just, you know, the two commissions get together, we draft some letter, have the mayor sign it, and send it off and see if that's a bigger, you know, kind of name that would get some notice? So that's kind of where I left it. So it's like, okay, there certainly seemed to be something there, again, as collaboration. So that was one that we talked through, and I understand.
I have, I have an update for you on that. It does sound as though there's been some progress in terms of the response there. So the last I spoke with Will, and by the way, I didn't mean like, oh, I'm, he's not my peer, like in a, like a condescending way, it's just a different structure. Will's great. He's presented to you all before, and will be back again this year. But he, yeah, let me know that essentially, he did get a response from ODOT on that recently, so they are going to take that up likely as a board, the Transportation Advisory Board this year, soon. So they've finally heard back, and there might be an opportunity for, you know, in terms of just your first question, like, how do we collaborate with other boards? How do we collaborate with other commissions? That's one way. We have a liaison from their board or commission come over to our commission and talk about what they're doing and get some input. Another way is we can hold joint work sessions, which we've done already this year with the Development Review Commission, and we're doing another one in April, on April 2. And I would just say generally, that's something we talk a lot about with, internally, there's been a lot of sort of re, not restructuring, but thought and put into the process for recruitment and selection for boards and commissions lately, and that was a big piece of it, is how can we collaborate more between boards and commissions, and what does that look like? So we're working on this as well internally and trying to come up with different ideas and sort of figure out what works and what might not, but those are some ideas that I could, you know, again, I presented that this would be possible. We could have Will come in and talk a little bit about this and get, get us up to speed on that work once he's a little bit further along with that process.
Yeah, I just think that would be great. I mean, just good things would come from that, I'm sure, so.
Absolutely.
So that was one, you know, to go over. The other that I didn't notice on your list was anything forest-related. Now, I know Jessica, you're, you know, we, we touched on that, and I understand why that the, the consultant we have has a, you know, is charging a fee, and we only have so much budget, I think, that she can spend on, so I get it, right? But it's, it just seems like we are only going to get to touch that once more before then it's done. Is that, is that correct?
So the urban, the urban and community forestry plan is not a land use document that the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the council. So there is no requirement for the Planning Commission to review, review that and make a recommendation. However, we have involved the commission. As you recall, during the summer, we had a public outreach, and we asked members of the Planning Commission and lots of other boards and commissions to be in a focus group. And then just last month, we held a joint study session with the Development Review Commission to get feedback. We're about two-thirds the way done with that project at this point, and what is left is an additional draft to review by the city council, which of course, the Planning Commission members are welcome to participate and weigh in on, and you could even provide testimony at the city council meeting if you so wish. And then the final adoption is in June. So we're pretty well into that project. We don't have another check-in with the Planning Commission at this point, and that was worked into the original scope, which, again, we're, we're pretty well into that project. However, what we do have coming up later is the tree code update. The tree code is not a land use code. That is also not a code that the Planning Commission is required to make a recommendation to the city council. However, we recognize the value in the commission's feedback on that, so the commission will be involved in that, as well as other boards and commissions. So we will be coming up with, I mean, we haven't come up with the request for proposals for that. We do expect to get a consultant to help with that work, because it will be quite extensive. One of the charges that we have on that is to come up with clear and objective standards that will apply to all, at least all housing development applications, because that is required by state law. That is something that this commission would typically know more about than other commissions. So I would expect you to be a little more involved in the tree code process. So we don't have that scoped out yet, but the Planning Commission would absolutely be involved in that process when it is begun later this year.
Okay. Well, that's good. That's good to know. And I guess the last one that I had is, there, it kind of falls into the same kind of collaborative bucket, and it kind of came up at the roundtable session last week, was related to streets and sidewalks and, you know, what they were doing with respect to connecting sidewalks for children walking to school, you know, that's great. And I brought up the State Street, and the wheelchair access has really been limited because the routes have changed all the dynamic of the sidewalks. So just driving here tonight, there was somebody in a wheelchair powering up in the street because they couldn't maneuver on the sidewalk. And, you know, I've got a picture. Can I show a picture? Or is that illegal?
Yeah.
Here's what the sidewalk looks like, you know, and, and there's like seven or eight of those that, here, I can, I'll send them around.
Where is that located?
Hmm?
Where is that located?
It is on State Street, kind of.
From Whole Foods and all that.
Yes.
Ah, okay.
And it was, I had talked to Erica after the meeting, and she, she recognized it. It's like, well, I, you know, I'm doing the best I can. And I said, you know, I get it, you know, I understand, but again, maybe there's something we could help with. So that one just stands out as like, wow, you've got these great handicap accesses from the street to the curb, but then the poor people can't get up the street because it's, it's, you know, just not passable. So, so I had that one, and, and I guess that's, that's enough. Well, the, the last one, which did come up at the Planning Commission, was after the big storm where everyone was losing power, there was a gentleman that had, I guess he had lived in Germany for a long period of time, and he talked about, you know, "I've lived in Germany for 40 years and never had power come out, and then I moved here and it's out every, every winter," talking about underground power and just how, how do you start to phase that in over time? And Eric, I hope you got a chance to read that article, you know, that I sent you, just about power grids in the future, and as, as little Lake Oswego continues to bring in more housing and development, you're going to need more power, and they're talking about AI and the amount of power that it sucks from the grid, and then on top of that, charging stations. What's the grid look like for Lake Oswego, and do you start sort of allocating funds towards underground power over a period of time? Maybe it takes 25 or 30 years to do, but you got to start somewhere. So it was a little bit of, what's the strategy for that? Because otherwise, as the gentleman from Germany explained, well, you just, the tree falls down, it wipes out, you know, three blocks worth of power, you just put them back up again, and then you wait for next year, and it's all over again. So, you know, thinking a little bit more, we'll say, on the offense side, so.
Proactive.
Hmm?
Proactive.
Yeah. So, so those were mine to talk about. And again, you guys have been great, like, oh, God, Dave's got another email coming out. So I, I just appreciate it, and I know that my, your time is limited, so again, thank you.
Yeah, the streets, right, rights of way are under the purview of our engineering and public works departments, so they manage the, the rights of way. And undergrounding of utilities is something we review during land use application review, and if we can exact that, if there's a nexus to the development and it is roughly proportional to the impact of the development, then we can require undergrounding. The issue tends to be when you have, like, small frontages, where you just have a single-family lot that's being divided, say, into two, and you have a small frontage, there's very logistical challenges about undergrounding, undergrounding a small portion. It doesn't make a lot of practical sense. You have to do a larger section in order to sufficiently underground and, and not create such an expensive, and also, you aren't making an improvement on someone else's frontage, that they're only responsible for their frontage. So when we have commercial redevelopment, when we have large subdivisions, which don't happen as often anymore, we do get undergrounding of utilities. So we do have a strategy in that way to get undergrounding. We also, if you can't get undergrounding because it's not practical, we do have a requirement that they signed what's called an LID waiver of remonstrance, which is, basically, puts them on the hook for if we called up a future local improvement district, they would need to participate in that in sort of undergrounding. I would say that's not a very effective program. It's not very popular, as you can imagine, because that can show up years later, and people then have to pay into this to, to do the undergrounding. And I don't believe we've ever called up a local improvement district, but that is the, the current strategy in terms of, of undergrounding, and it's quite expensive. It is extremely expensive, and when you look at all the work that needs to be done in the right of way, you, you have to prioritize. So we have pathways, we have road maintenance, we have undergrounding. It, it all adds up really quickly, and we have limited amount of funds, but.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, yeah.
I guess I would point out that this is generally, and as, as you pointed out as well, this is private infrastructure. This is not something that the city actually does and controls and owns themselves, so that's an additional challenge in addition to, we're talking about the entire system here, we're not just talking about, you know, what we would require for a new development. I think what you're talking about is more sweeping upgrades, and those, you know, can be very expensive on a site-by-site basis, much less this, like, large citywide program. Yeah, I think the ultimate, the biggest piece here is that that's all very much within the purview of engineering and transportation, or engineering and public works, rather, and we can have them come and talk to you a little bit more about, like, citywide planning and some of the constraints that they've been facing there, but yeah, you know, there's little that comes within the purview of the Planning Commission, other than what Jessica had mentioned, where if there's a new development, we do require that the utility is provided underground. Otherwise, it's these larger kind of citywide planning efforts that we probably want to be talking about, and again, that's more of an engineering department sort of expertise. So yeah, that's something that we, we could talk about. You know, I, I think we also want to be careful not to be duplicative, so if there's work that's already kind of happening in other departments or other sectors of the city, you know, we want to be careful not to just have them do the same presentation over and over again to a bunch of different boards and commissions. I think we want to make sure to get up to speed on the important issues, but we just want to be mindful of their time. So I'd say, if we're going to ask for engineering staff to come do presentations, let's just try to keep it to two or three, maybe, for the, for the year, because it, it might be a lot for them to manage in addition to their typical workload. But otherwise, yeah, that's fair game, obviously, for us to talk a little bit more about in terms of what they're doing and just have, again, like, more educational informational presentation, given that it is generally outside of the scope of the commission. Another sort of component here, oh, you had talked about the pathways work, so that's just another idea that, you know, there's clearly a lot of work that the city council has been doing, and the city has been doing along with, again, with the engineering department related to pathways, pathway improvements and different projects throughout the city, and so that is another thing that we could talk about. Those are sort of. Those are sort of prioritized through the Transportation Systems Plan, more or less a list of improvements, and it's what Erica had, you know, the city engineer had been presenting at the Mayor's Roundtable, one of the three topics last Thursday. But we can provide a similar sort of background and, and presentation for you all, but ultimately, yeah, that is work that's being sort of spearheaded and directly, you know, managed by the engineering department. So we wouldn't want to, like, step on toes and, again, duplicate their efforts, but we, we can be helpful, and I think those are some of the ways that we could be helpful, giving them input if, you know, they have staff come in and talk to us, and we can relay kind of planning commission's, you know, perspective on that particular issue, and that might be kind of the best way to, to handle it, at least, that we have within our sort of arsenal right now.
Jessica, if I could ask about something you said, is that when there's a, a pretty small development, then it, it doesn't make logistical sense, you know, to do undergrounding. You're, you're talking about, like, right-of-way power pole undergrounding, right? Are, are there requirements for undergrounding of the service in the private parcel?
Yeah, yes. So the, the service from the power pole to the house has to be undergrounded. Now, there are exceptions, because sometimes people just have solid rock and they can't underground it, so there are exceptions built into the code, but by and large, everyone has to underground at least the service from the line to the house.
Is that just the case for, for new development, or are there other triggers for that?
I think it's new development, might be a substantial remodel, but I don't know off the top of my head, but not just if somebody just puts a small.
Not just upgrading service or something like that?
No. It's, but definitely for new construction, it must be undergrounded.
You can imagine it's not a citywide solution. It would take a while.
Yeah. And, you know, the big issue are the trees coming down on, you know, the, the larger service lines, so.
And the other thing that staff has been doing is we're trying to work closely with PGE about managing trees that are in power lines. We often see that they do a lot of significant trimming, that they leave the trees up, and so we've talked to them about removing the tree altogether when there, significant pruning that needs to happen. And then we typically, if there's going to be mitigation, we want to make sure it's the right tree in the right place, so it's something that's compatible with a power line, so that isn't gonna grow to, but, but again, we have so many trees in the city. I mean, there's only so much you can do, but that, that helps. So we do talk to PGE as well.
Well, and while we're just talking more generally about, about this topic, I do, I think that's really another benefit of the undergrounding, is that the trees really get mangled. You know, you can see they're, you know, they're just, you know, leaning just under the power lines, because that's all that was allowed to remain, so, you know, kind of outside of our purview, but would be nice.
One thing that I would like to propose, switching gears here, is, I don't know if this would be something in maybe like the code amendments. Jessica, I believe you were talking with some of our folks about generally a variance pathway for the Lake Grove, or not Lake Grove, West Lake Design District. Our project is past that stage. It, it won't apply anymore, whatever we decide to do, but as a courtesy to those who want to build there in the future, I wanted to propose that, as that would be a helpful process to have in place.
Yeah, I, I agree, and it, and it, it aligns with potential legislation right now that's being considered, and if it is adopted as proposed, then we would need, we would want to likely look at our variance processes, because the state will have a mandated variance process, which is, the criteria are not very rigorous. And they have an, what I would call as a sort of opt-out, that if a city complies with certain requirements, then it does not have to utilize the state mandated variance. It can use their own variance process, which gives us a little bit more local control. And what that, those eligibility requirements are, is that we have to have a variance process that allows the variances listed in the bill, but under our own process, and it, and it has to be applicable to all residential development in the city. And then we also had to show that we have approved a certain percent, percentage of variance applications, a minimum percent over the last five years, which I can already tell you the city could easily comply with that. So one of the things that we need to look at is make sure that because the West Lake Grove Design District doesn't currently have a variance process, in order for us to kind of opt-out of the state mandated variance, we would need to come up with our, a variance process for West Lake Grove. And then, of course, we'd also need to look at all of our other variance processes to make sure that it complies with the, the opt-out allowance in the state. So there may be, in the, sorry, in the bill. So there may be other code amendments that we would need to adopt as part of that package. I don't know when the compliance date will that, of that will be, we'll need, I'll need to look into that, because I know that they, if they adopt the bill, there, there's usually some, well, there needs to be rulemaking associated with that. But I think initially, the bill says January 1st, 2025, but I don't know if that ultimately will be the deadline. If that is the case, that is something we'll need to get started right away, and it's certainly not on our work plan right, right now, so that would be something that would be out. So thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I guess, just to summarize or add another flavor to this, that is something that we'll be addressing when, I think I mentioned we're going to have a legislative update, but if I haven't, we're planning to provide you with a legislative update sometime in April about the recent legislative session at the state, and kind of what those requirements are, how things landed. And we'll know more about that then, and we'll know a little bit more of what we'll be required to do as a city. So we'll talk a little bit more about it soon, but also, yeah, it's likely that it'll require more of like a overall, like, audit of our code related to variances, make sure we're covering our bases. So it is, in some ways, kind of similar to the code audit and amendments strategy we're thinking about for the housing production work, but probably need to get it started a little bit earlier, so that's a good suggestion. But, yeah, the, the specifics are still kind of TBD based on what they actually pass at the state, so.
And I do want to clarify that I know that it would not benefit that Hacienda project right now. However, there are aspects of it where, for instance, the connectivity, internal connectivity issue, obviously, there's nothing to connect to right now, so they don't have to, they just have to show that future connectivity. If we did provide for a variance process and they felt that they qualified for a variance, they could apply for that later on and do a modification to their approval to eliminate that requirement, as long as they can show they meet those variance criteria. So I just want to point out, well, it won't, you wouldn't be able to benefit for other aspects, at least there's that one aspect, because the connectivity is not gonna happen right away. It'll happen if, if and when the adjacent property ever develops.
Good point. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on the work session, the work plan? Any other comments, suggestions, questions?
All right, well, I guess, generally speaking, the next step will be, I'll come back at our next work session, which is the 25th of March, to talk a little bit about what you have provided to me in terms of input tonight. So I'll basically revise the list of our proposed work plan projects to include what we've discussed tonight, you know, as much as feasible. Some of it will be a little bit more educational informational sessions, others will be, you know, potentially a larger project that will extend into 2025. But, yeah, that's kind of the process, and then we'll talk about this on the 25th of March, and make sure we're on the right track, and then, yeah, move forward from there.
Great, thank you, Eric. Okay, so next on the agenda is other business. Do we have other business to discuss?
The only thing I had was feedback from the roundtable session this past week. I don't know if you want to talk about it, or, so I was surprised, there were 50 people that came, and it was mainly a discussion on parking and sidewalk work, but there were 50 people in the audience, and Eric presented, and then Erica, Erica presented from engineering. So you went through your kind of a quick summary of, you know, options 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and 6, and 7, and 8, and there weren't very many questions. I mean, I, I thought they were coming loaded for bear, you know, and there was, nobody said anything, you know, and I, I was looking for the knives and pitchforks to come out after you, and there was nothing. So I was surprised how many people showed up, but how few actually commented on, on anything. So I was, I was just surprised. I don't know if that's typical or not, but not a lot of conversation.
There was conversation, you know, I think we, they heard supportive comments, actually, interestingly. But, yeah, we, I did discuss after the meeting, there was a woman who was talking a little bit about her concern, and so it's not like I heard only a one-sided perspective here, but I was also surprised that it was so positive, generally speaking, yeah. But, yeah, I think that's been, generally, you know, there is kind of a split when I produce, or when I present on this topic, you know, it's not all one way or all the other. But I have been finding, yeah, the folks are a little bit more receptive than you might expect in certain contexts. And that's really reflective of the outreach we've been doing so far in general. I may have mentioned this or may have not, I actually just also presented about climate-friendly neck of world communities to the DEI Advisory Board earlier this evening at 6:00. So I got a little bit of input from them right before I came over here and talked about this. So we're conducting outreach on that work, I guess, actively right now.
Ah. Yeah, thank you for that update.
Yeah, it was really interesting just always to hear from residents and, you know, what's really of interest to them, and you, you kind of hear it live, and you can feel their emotion or just passiveness. It was very interesting.
Very good. Yes, seeing that, we always have an empty house.
Yeah, it was, I, I was really surprised.
Well, folks are concerned about undergrounding of utilities, very much so, so that was a hot topic.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on to schedule review.
All right, so I have to wait for the delay on this again, I'm sorry about that. So our next meeting is canceled. The March 11th meeting of the planning commission is not happening, so our, your actual next meeting is March 25th, where we'll be discussing our second sort of round of comments on the work plan, and making sure that we're sort of headed in the right direction, and that I'm incorporating essentially your input accurately into our work plan for this year. We'll also have a update from Sonia Johnson of the Engineering Department, who is, I think I mentioned a moment ago, working on some larger stormwater code-related updates, where most of it is going to be within the utilities code, but there are some changes for consistency that will be necessary within the community development code. So she's gonna talk about her work there. There's a small piece of it that relates to the planning commission, so we will have a formal, or you all will have a formal role in the recommendation for those amendments, but there's a larger project going on that she's going to speak to you all about a few times this year, and that'll be the first kind of introduction to that project. I would just mention then that the next meeting that I would love y'all to attend is on the 2nd of April. That will be the Joint Planning Commission and City Council Work Session on the Housing Production Strategy. So that's not a typical planning commission meeting time, that's a city council meeting time. So I just wanted to point that out, too, that that's a different date than we usually meet, it's on Tuesday at 5:30 PM. So that will be a little bit different of a setup, so that we can have that more collaborative discussion again with members of city council about the initial recommendations for the housing production strategy. So that's sort of the, the next meeting that you all should be aware of.
What's the date again for that?
April 2nd, Tuesday. And I'll, I'll just leave it at that for now.
So we were talking about the schedule for April, and we, we had also mentioned that we might be able to have our, our first meeting on that April 2nd and cancel April 8th.
Yeah.
How would that work?
That, that's kind of what I was thinking, since you had that additional meeting with city council that we wouldn't meet on the 8th, because you would have already met and had a sort of productive discussion a week before then. And then we would have other work session taking place later in April, likely that legislative update I was talking about a moment ago. So that would be, the idea is that that sort of joint work session would take the place of the first meeting in April.
Okay, and so we'll just get notice of that?
Yes, I will be sending out a revised schedule that will include all of this information.
Okay.
Or I suppose Iris or Christina will likely be sending it out, but it will, it will be updated.
Okay. Thank you. So is there anything else to discuss? If nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.